I'll find out.
I'm off it.
Well, I will call the village board meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trusty Gus.
Leprechaun is here.
Trusty Jensen. Trusty Miller.
Here.
Trusty Addison.
Here.
Trusty Sittick.
Here.
Trusty Wells.
Here.
Attorney Frollo.
Here.
Mayor Hooker.
Here.
And Clerk McDonald just present.
All right, if you'd all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The one that the Secretary of Transportation has been...
Oh, yeah.
...retarded today.
No.
It's on the air.
Oh, boy. All right, we have our first public comment opportunity for any comment on the agenda items. I see no one, so we will move, they'll move on to the consent agenda. This consent agenda includes the following. Approval of the village board regular meeting minutes for February 24th. Bills presented for payment, the amount of $226,784.90. Community development report for February of 2022. Is there anything the board would have us consider separately? Hearing none, do we have a motion to...
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Trusty Gus, second by, oh, you took your hat off and it just got brighter.
It's even brighter.
Do you want me to put it back on?
No.
I took it off because we said to pledge allegiance.
I just wasn't ready for that. I looked over like, whoa. Second by Trusty Miller. Any discussion?
I had a couple, Mayor. Looking at the building division report, I was just curious, we showed a total on page 13 of 28, a total of 21,233 collected against valued construction of 270,080. And that, it just struck me, it seemed like a lot. By my ciphering, it's 7.9% of the value. Is that typical or is that higher?
It depends on the types of permits that they are. So some of them are just, they're value-based and some of them are more like a flat. I'd have to check into it to see what caused it. I don't know off the top of my head.
Is that kind of average for, I have looked at it year over year.
You know, I don't know, but I can look.
Okay, thanks. And the other question I had was on the next page of your report. I just was curious as to where we are with respect to the trail, the lakefront thing. You said they continue to work on it. And also, of course, we look in our party session, we were looking at some big numbers for phase two, and we were hopeful that that would be covered by grants. Any clue as to where that effort stands?
So the phase two, depending on the timing of it, we will apply again for grants, ITEP grant, again, there are other grant opportunities. So we're still trying to have that paid for with the grant. That's the ideal scenario. As far as the status, they've been working on the refining the layout, the configuration of the path. I can ask them for a more detailed report back.
Now, as I recall, the phase one had, we funded that because there was no way we're going to be able to apply for the grants without completing it. Is that now completed, done and ready so that we can apply for the grant?
It is not 100% done. The last step of phase one is identifying a step for, identifying funding for phase two. So the approval of the design with IDOT comes with simultaneous identifying a funding source for phase two.
Are we on track as far as the timeline to apply for those grants?
We are. We are.
Okay, thanks. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else?
All right, the clerk, please call the roll.
Trusty Gus.
Hi.
Trusty Jensen.
Yes, I, I, I'm sorry, we're having a sidebar here.
Trusty Miller.
Hi.
Trusty Addison.
Hi.
Trusty Sittick.
Hi.
Trusty Wells.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Nothing earth-shaking to report under the mayor's report, so we'll move on to trustees. First up, finance committee, trustee Jensen.
Thank you, I needn't be awoken for this one. I have two items. First of all, as we always eagerly await the announcement of the date for our next finance committee meeting, March 23rd, at which time we will be looking at, I expect, the expense worksheets for the upcoming fiscal year budget. And the agenda item that I have is to offer a resolution, and this is, by the way, a motion, offering a resolution overriding execution of a letter of engagement with Lauterbach, Aiman, and to provide village auditing services. This is a company, the firm that we've been using for several years, 19 through 21 fiscal years, and they have held their price the last two years with zero change. They are proposing a $500 change this year with additional 500 the next two years, which is under a 3% per year increase. Staff has been very happy with their services and recommends that we continue to engage this firm. And that concludes my motion.
All right.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jensen, second by trustee Addison. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trusty Jensen.
Hi.
Trusty Miller.
Hi.
Trusty Addison.
Hi.
Trusty Sittick.
Hi.
Trusty Wells.
Hi.
Trusty Gus.
Hi.
Excuse me. All right, moving on to the most festive and brightly colored, trustee Gus, what have you got for press and rec?
Well, I gotta, just want to wish everybody a super, super happy St. Patty's Day. And we got things coming up in the parks. One of our biggest items is going to be the car show in August. So we're going to have a few meetings and hopefully get everything in order. Hopefully a few other items will fly also as we discuss.
Good.
And that ends my report.
All right, moving on to planning, building, and zoning, trustee Wells.
Thank you, I had no report.
Okay. Public relations and IG committee.
I saw some deer in my neighborhood this morning. That's about all I have to report. I guess they didn't get them all from Lanes Woods. They're still walking around.
They've been hiding behind your shed all winter long.
Those might be state park deer just going west.
Well, I don't know.
Have you been feeding them?
No, 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 no. But no, I have nothing tonight other than...
All right. Public safety committee, trustee Sittick.
Thank you. I'm just glad that we have Sheriff's Office with us and the fire department with us this evening. Is there anything you'd like to mention, anything new?
It was another busy year for us. This is our busiest year on record once again. We ran, I think, 8% more calls than we did the previous year. And by average, over the last 17 years, the fire department has ran 63% more calls than just from the past 17 years. On average, for the county, for all the fire departments, the growth is only at a 37% increase. So we're well above most of the other fire departments. And I think as for last year, our increase was like fifth most. So we're getting busier and trying to...
What do you attribute the increase? Are they taxi cab calls or are they on sickness illnesses or?
Yes.
COVID, was COVID part of it?
COVID calls weren't that much. We had the same amount, I think, per average as all the other fire departments did. A lot more psychiatric calls. That's countywide. You listen to the radio, all the psych calls are just going up all over. I don't know if that has anything to do with COVID or anything. There's studies saying that there is some kind of correlation with that. But, yeah, psychs, as the sheriff can probably say, drugs, a lot of falls. Yeah, it's still emergencies, so we're just getting busier and busier.
I was just curious, since we're looking at the suggested merger with Zion, a lot of their calls are basically taxi cab calls. So I was just wondering if that, if you're seeing an upsurge in that as well.
You're always going to have those. Some people just can't get to where they want to go. Some people just want to get to the hospital and are released before we're released from the hospital. Those are...
That's a very expensive camera.
For that.
Really.
But yes, it's been around the same, but the psychs are probably the most that's gone up over the last several years. We're seeing a huge increase in psychiatric calls. I'm sorry, someone else had a question?
I just was wondering how your staffing level is to handle the increase in calls. Have you been able to keep up and cover it or is there a big...
Staffing is not good right now, no. But that is for all the fire departments. I did look at trying to contract services out, but they said they could not give us the members we need. Currently, we're down one full-time member and four permanent part-time members. But it's, and this isn't just unique for us, this is countywide and countrywide.
Well, it's every restaurant and hardware store and everywhere else, too.
No one's applying. And the people that do apply, they don't have the certification. So it's going to take us probably for the people that we do have roughly a year to get them trained up through all the classes they need. So they benefit us, but it just takes a while for them to get trained up to the level they need to be.
Right.
So let us, you know, struggle a lot of overtime right now, but doing what we can, provide the best service we can right now. So staff is, there's always going to be the staff there, but we're just running short right now.
Chief, can you tell us, are those talks with Zion still going on or that's done?
No. Yeah, that was something I, I was in chief at the time, so it ended prior to me coming in. I really didn't think that was going to be beneficial for the fire department anyway with the way that it was projected that have our staff members and vehicles stationed at their fire station. So again, I think it's a good thing that that did not go through.
I agree. Thank you.
Anything else I can answer?
Well, thank you for your update.
Thank you very much for coming. And to the sheriff's office, any of anything?
No, I'm just glad that I'm back. Been laid off for a couple months for a broken clip, but other than that, happy to be back. Just a few updates, I know you guys have seen the press releases. We're getting two more canine handlers. They both should be going through school. I heard two different things, both could either go this April or there'll be one this spring, one in the fall. But as our canine teams are aging, at least not just the handlers, but the dogs themselves, we need to prepare for those to be retired. Obviously, we lost Diesel earlier or later in the year last year, but he was replaced rather quickly with a dog from Tops, Riker. Both have been doing great. Craig's a great handler. The ones that I've seen so far that have been at least put in for the position will be great handlers as well. Staffing-wise, I can echo the chief's sentiments with hiring people, but again, as it's been mentioned, that it's everywhere. But we do have, we've hired and having field trained right now six, and we have another six on the way. Fortunately, we had two return back to their previous departments, one back to Chicago, one back to Brown Lake Beach. The problem we have with people that come up from the city leasing down there is a little bit different. Here, we actually expect them to engage with people and they have to try to at least resolve the problem, whereas in Chicago, the domestics and things that we experience and that we handle is the sheriff's office and what the communities here expect out of us isn't the same kind of service that they give in Chicago. So a lot of those guys and gals that come up here can't handle that kind of police. And I'm not saying they're not great police officers, they just don't, they're not able to switch off that running and gunning that they get to do down there and deal with bedroom communities and stuff like that. But the sheriff's office is actively hiring a lot more laterals. Like I said, we've got six getting ready to come back or getting ready to start field training. And those who got to meet Deputy Richowski that went to the FBI, she has returned back to us, which is a great move. She was gone for about two years, so it'd be easy transition for her to come back. So other than that, I'm just happy to be back in, back in uniform and back to work.
Glad to have you back.
Glad you're back.
Thank you.
You're not even limping.
Oh, if you watch me walk, it's a limber. It's a range of motion thing, not a pain thing.
I'm sure you could still catch me, so that's not a problem.
Well, and like I told Mark, if I'm actually having to run after someone, there's something wrong.
There's this...
If I'm running, it's probably someone chasing me.
Now, there's two new canines coming on board?
Yes, there will be two new.
Yep, and are the local kids going to be able to have the opportunity to name those dogs as well?
Yes, that was put out late last week. They put that out at the press release. If you got the press release, Mark, if you want to put that on your village website and your announcements, I think that's going through until next week or even maybe two weeks.
Very nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, on this subject, I see from the sheriff's Facebook page that our longtime liaison officer, Roman, is retired.
Yeah.
Yes, Roman, I retired him on Sunday.
Did you?
He's on his way.
At that age, you know, one day you start a new job, right?
Oh, no, he's got to decompress for a little bit. He's not looking for...
Yeah.
And you have no kids.
Very good, thank you.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Up next, we've got public works, trustee Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing on the agenda to report, but I will say we had a lovely meeting on Tuesday night of the committee and it's a good crew. They did a good job. I think what we, was it 11 snow events or 12? 12 snow events that we responded, when I say we, I mean them, they responded to this year. Thankfully, they were all fairly mild. We didn't have a horrible winter, which is good. So I don't know if we're having a fire sale on salt, if anybody's interested, purchase a truckload or... We've got, we've got plenty left, but that's it. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. We did not have a tax increment finance committee meeting, so nothing to report there. Up next, staff reports, we've got an ordinance for liquor.
Yes, sir. A few of the items on the, on this ordinance are primarily cleanup items. There's really four main issues associated with the ordinance. One is removal of the F-1 class that was revised a few years back. So that's just all F, so that's eliminating all the references to that. And our current code allows for 24-hour sales if somebody's open. So more specifically, it allows that the class F licenses can sell liquor while they're open during their normal business hours. So this would revise the business hours to prohibit liquor sales from 12 to 6. Nobody's open during that time and they haven't been selling. We did survey them and that's the case, but I believe that that was the intent all along for those hours. So we're addressing that issue. There's a change in the liquor act that allows for delivery of liquor. And then there's the change in the number of F licenses. Somewhere back in 2019, the code was revised, removing one too many licenses and, you know, we were just going forward with those numbers and we found that error. So we needed to correct it to eight, which was the actual ones listed and issued. And then the ninth one that would be added is for Casey's. Casey submitted an application and their application is in order, so this is adding a ninth one to come for them also.
Very good.
So this is adding, this is adding a license.
Yeah, one license, yeah. It shows two, but...
Scribner messed up that other one.
Yeah, that guy's Scribner. Yep.
So which establishment was operating without a license?
All of them.
Yeah.
Or none of them.
Or whichever one, whichever one you want it to be.
I would rather we corrected it before we had to find out.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion to approve this ordinance?
It'll move.
All right, this is, and I'll read the title, an ordinance amending the beach park liquor code. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Addison. Discussion.
I have a couple items I wanted to query our attorney about, I think, or Mark, whoever is the appropriate person. First one, looking at page 24, 26, paragraph E, under section two. It references that they are not, let's see, shelf stock, okay. No class F liquor license holders shall stock, store, or otherwise maintain on or in the license premises any distilled spirits which are contained in the original packaging. What in the world does that mean? Does that mean they can repackage them and then? I don't understand what that, why we have that clause there. It shouldn't just be period under any circumstances.
Yeah, that is, language that has not been changed, that's been in your code.
Well, it may well be, but I didn't read it carefully before.
We did not focus on that, but let's go through it. That's a great question. Yeah, that is, that's unusual. I've never seen that type of wording. Does similar wording appear through the rest of the ordinance? I wonder if that was a cut and paste for the packaged liquor sales? Which really should be, which are not contained in the original package.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, or if we're prohibiting distilled spirits without exception.
Right. Any distilled spirits, period.
So we just don't need that clause?
It would be eliminating which are contained in the original packaging. Well, it's a beer and wine license.
Right, correct. So you could just stop the sentence after the word distilled spirits? Correct. And strike which are contained in the original packages? Exactly.
Let me clarify. It is an unusual way of phrasing it, yeah. I would just task staff with maybe looking through the rest of the license categories that permit spirits to be sold and see if there's a phrase similar.
Yeah, and if they did, you'd think that would be just the opposite, would require that they remain, stay in the original packaging.
Right, they have to be in the original.
Yeah, it's got to have the stamp on it and all that.
Yep, not by the glass.
Well, yeah, exactly. Because anything otherwise would imply it's a pouring license, not a packaging. Or mixed.
Right, okay. Well, with that amendment...
Well, I have other questions.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not done. Mr. Scribner here, and I appreciate the fact that Mark struck a lot of the archaic language where the words are spelled out and written in numerals in a parenthesis. There are a few that he missed, but this goes back to the days where you couldn't read handwriting and so they had to do it both ways just to be double sure. And lawyers just carried this on just because, that's why it's all done. The next one...
I do not question the attorney.
I'll send you a reference from history sometime. The next question is under section three, five decimal sixteen decimal zero eight five, which is not then written out on page 25. And all holders of liquor license for retail sale of alcoholic liquor shall be permitted to deliver, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Does the law require us to allow delivery and it mandates that we allow delivery?
It does. It does mandate, and it also preempts home rule in this regard.
Okay, then that's fine, then I guess we can object. If it didn't, I'd object.
Yeah, and that's a pretty common refrain that we're getting from a lot of elected officials. The law does mandate it, and what it does is sort of carry forward some of the special provisions that were put into place during the pandemic.
Which is completely understandable, but like all other pandemic things like masks, it should sunset.
No, and they passed this law in the middle of 2021, effective January 1st, 2022, continuing the allowance for retail...
I wonder which lobby and which state representative pushed that, that might presently be under indictment.
It might be, it might be a bipartisan effort, but what I did was include in section three, A through F, I've added some restrictions on how the deliveries can be made. These are provisions that I've used in other communities to at least help to ensure that the delivery is being made to somebody who is 21 years old.
Well, and my final question pertains to one of the clauses that you added, then, D on this page, use the word should, and I would think that should be the word shall.
Sure.
Or it should say mandatory or...
Must be... Shell works.
Adequate evidence, I mean, I think it should say...
Yeah, you definitely want them to obtain proof that the person receiving is...
Well, if you look at E, it talks about a valid state ID and driver's license. So E clarifies D. D indicates a record shall be kept by the delivery entity of the form of identification, which shall include a driver's license, state identification number, name, signature, et cetera. So I think that's covered. But the word should, shall be, should, shall be changed to shall. Let's go back.
Thank you. That concludes my questions on this ordinance. So are we amending that line on previous page?
Yeah, and D, for D, we would just change the word should to shall.
But in E, the one that we were going to strike, the contained in original package?
Oh, back then, yes. Well, we're going to, I'm going to try to tie this all together here. Before I forget, our ordinance did contain a prohibition on delivering alcohol. If it's still there, obviously we're using a little...
Doing the same thing we just did with the F licenses?
Yeah, but at this point, obviously, we're not prepared to deal with that, but I just ask you to look into that and make sure, because I actually did have a pizza delivery group delivering six packs of beer and things like that, and we got wind of that and had to put an end to that, so...
Well, Mayor, could we not, since we're amending this thing anyhow, could we not amend this to supersede any contradictory language elsewhere in our...
Well, and I'm sure the boilerplate's at the end, but nothing like leaving junk in when we don't need to leave junk in, so...
Right, okay. Well, yeah, we can always go back and fix it.
Yeah, yeah. So we had a motion by Miller and a second by Addison. I would ask if you are in agreement with the change for section two E under class F license to remove the language, which are contained in the original packaging and under section three, D changing the word should to shall.
I'll amend my motion to include the changes made to section two and section three.
We have an amended motion. Do we have amended second? We do. Okay. All that, and I guess then I would ask, the clerk, please call the roll.
Trusty Miller.
Hi.
Trusty Addison.
Hi.
Trusty Sittick.
Epstein.
Trusty Wells.
Epstein.
Trusty Gus.
Hi.
Trusty Jensen.
Hi.
Motion carries. Okay, anything else from staff? No, sir, that's... Thank you. We have no old business. Is there any new business to come before the board tonight? Hearing none. We have our second opportunity for citizens. Carrie, your chance. Not yet.
I don't think we're going to have a...
Not yet. Stay tuned.
Are you volunteering?
Recite a poem or something? No?
Okay, we have no cause for an executive session.
A limerick. No.
Do we have a limerick?
No, she should recite a limerick. I've got one. I'll do it later.
Okay. Okay, well, this would be the time when someone normally says...
Oh, are we to that point already? Mayor, I would like to offer a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
I opposed, we adjourn. Thank you all.